Good evening, everyone, and thank you for tuning into the second night of the 2020 Hamilton County School Board debates. Tonight's debate will feature District Seven candidates incumbent Joe Wingate and candidate Debbie Myers. My name is Molly Blankenship. I'm the Executive Director of Chattanooga 2.0. We are Chattanooga and Hamilton County's community-wide partnership dedicated to transforming education and workforce development outcomes from birth through career. So, welcome, and I'm so glad to have you all. I want to thank our partners WRCB Channel 3 and the Chattanooga Times Free Press for co-hosting these critically important debates alongside us. I also want to thank our District Seven candidates for participating this evening and for their interest in either continuing to serve or beginning to serve in the interest of students, families, and teachers on the Hamilton County School Board. Our candidates answered some get-to-know-you questions ahead of tonight's debate, so if you'd like to learn more about them, please visit WRCB's Decision 2020 page. So, thank you again for joining us. Thank you, candidates, for your willingness to serve and being with us tonight. And without any further ado, I would like to introduce David Carroll of WRCB Channel 3 and Dave Flessner of the Chattanooga Times Free Press, who will be moderating this evening's debate. David and Dave.
Thank you, Molly. And, Dave, we want to thank you for being here. Dave and I will go over the rules of the debate for our candidates and for our viewers who are watching. Both candidates will leave their cameras and microphones on at all times during the debate. Each candidate is given two minutes to make an opening statement. Now, Dave and I will be alternating, asking a total of 15 questions, time permitting. Some of the questions will remain the same across each debate, and those remaining will be customized to each particular district. Three of the questions will be presented by shareholders of District Seven this evening. Each candidate will be given one minute to respond to a question and then an optional 30-second rebuttal if appropriate. Now, when there are 15 seconds left and a candidate's answer, you'll hear a little Chattanooga choo-choo train whistle. Candidates, that's your signal to slow down and prepare to stop. And then, if you have gone over your limit, you'll hear that again, and we will require you to stop after that. Time will begin when each candidate begins speaking. Now, once time has expired at the end of an answer, we can allow a candidate to complete a sentence, but we would prefer a candidate not begin a new thought after that time has expired. Dave?
Each candidate will also be given two minutes to make a closing statement after the conclusion of our question-and-answer period tonight. Candidates, we're not previously given any of tonight's questions, and they may not use the Internet, cellphone, or other outside assistance to answer questions during our debate. As moderators, we may ask candidates to clarify a statement or to offer more explanation when needed. The goal of our debate is simply to introduce the candidates of District Seven and their platforms. We'll start with the opening statements in alphabetical order, and then we'll alternate who answers first as we proceed through the evening. Candidates, do you have any questions before we begin?
I don't think so.
No, I'm good.
If not, Debbie Myers, you're up first. You have two minutes to make the opening statement.
Thank you, gentlemen, very much. Hey, my name is Debbie Myers, and I'm honored to have the opportunity to run for the District Seven School Board seat and represent our teachers, students, parents, and taxpayers. With my years working in the corporate and nonprofit sectors, I believe that I have the ability to bring best practices and protocols with business efficiencies to the board. We have three grandchildren that attend school in our district and a daughter that teaches in our school system, as well as our other daughter that teaches in Texas. We have over 65% of our residents that live in our district that have conservative principles and traditional values. Over the past four years, I, along with many others, feel that our voices have not been heard. As a fiscally conservative businesswoman, mother, and grandmother, I want to be a school board representative that actually hears the constituents that vote me into that position.
All right, thank you very much. Joe Wingate, you have a two-minute opening statement.
Thank you very much. Yes, my name is Joe Wingate, and I currently represent District Seven on the Hamilton County School Board. I'm a native Chattanooga, lived most of my life in District Seven. I have a bachelor's degree in secondary education with an emphasis in biology. I have a master's degree in educational administration, a master's degree in exercise science, and I'm currently pursuing a doctoral degree at East Tennessee State University. I'm a 22-year veteran educator of the middle school, high school, community college, and university levels. I have three children who are currently in Hamilton County schools in the elementary age group, and I'm also the proud husband to Dr. Kim Wingate. I ran for this seat four years ago because of the underperformance of our school system. As someone who is a proud educator, I was discouraged with where our school system was heading, and I felt like had been heading for many years. I currently am an Assistant Professor of Exercise Science at Chattanooga State and a lengthy coaching career, which saw many of Hamilton County products coming to Chattanooga State that I was teaching in class and then also trying to recruit and coach in our baseball program. I was discouraged by the fact that I did not see a plan, no strategic plan to address academic improvement, no strategic plan to address our facility needs, no strategic plan to address budgeting and finances on a long-term scale. And I decided it was time for me to do something about that and stick my nose in. I am very excited and proud of the work that the school board that I currently serve on has done over the last four years. I'm proud of the fact that there now is a plan, and that plan is being pursued and put into action, and that that plan has shown fruits. And so, I would be honored to continue to serve in this seat to represent those of District Seven, to improve our school system.
All right, thank you very much, both of you for opening statements. Our first question is related to the academic impacts of COVID-19. And Joe, you will answer first, followed by Debbie. COVID-19 has already created some credit and learning deficits and is expected to widen achievement gaps. What should the school district do to remediate students and make up for this lost instructional time?
Well, this is going to be an issue that folks all around the country are going to be grappling with. You know, one of the things that I've had the ability to have access to is, at the higher ed level, we've been doing online learning for quite some time. As a matter of fact, much of what takes place on our campus, even in what we call our traditional or in-ground classes, has an online component. And so, much of the assignments that are completed are done online, sometimes quizzes, assessments, things of that nature are done online. And I think education has changed forever. I really do. I think that we are all at a point where high school students have been able to have access to this type of online education for a while through dual enrollment, through some other opportunities. And now, it's forced us to have to take a look at these issues when we talk about primary ed. And so, we're going to be grappling with those things, but I'm proud of the fact that we've got devices one-to-one for all of our students, and we're beginning to use learning management systems online.
All right. Debbie, same question for you.
You know, COVID, it's just such a peculiar time we're all living in. We are going to have to manage this pandemic. You know, we hear on the news every day that the cases are rising in our county. We don't know what that's going to look like. There is obviously an achievement gap that we need to really focus on, how to do that well, make sure the technology is there for each and every student, whether it be an iPad, a tablet, whatever they need. The long-term approach, I believe, to closing the achievement gaps in our schools can and should be addressed at the early grades, K through 3. If a child is not on grade level by third grade, there is a good chance they will remain behind in academic performance, and the gap will continue to grow as they go through school. So, with COVID, it's just made this problem even more profound, and we really need to work diligently to make sure each and every child receives an education.
All right, as we mentioned, in each question, we give the person who answered first the opportunity for rebuttal. Joe, do you have anything to add or respond to?
No.
All right, we'll move on to the next question, Dave.
Thank you both for your responses. The first question, Debbie, the second question goes to you first, and concerns the school district's role in providing support services for students' mental and emotional health beyond just the academic training in the classroom. COVID-19 has caused, obviously, a great deal of grief and anxiety, the loss of jobs, stressful interruptions in routine, and canceled events such as graduations, sports championships, and more. Do you believe schools should have a role in supporting students' mental and emotional health? We're asking a yes-or-no response. If yes, how do you plan to work with the district to accomplish this goal? And if not, why not?
My answer is yes. I believe that each and every child is impacted, not only by COVID, but by possibly home life, things that obviously need to be addressed within their homes. I think we have the opportunity within each and every school system to help these children navigate these really difficult situations. When I was a CASA volunteer and I was a court-appointed advocate for abuse in the neglected children, I mean, I dealt with this every single day. We need to address the whole child, and I believe that our school district has the opportunity and the resources to do that.
Joe, what should be the school's role in emotional and mental health support for students?
Well, as an educator, all teachers know that teachers have always been engaged in that role. As a teacher, you wear many hats in the classroom, and so, teachers have always been engaged socially, emotionally, whether or not that's been their charge, they've picked up those roles. And so, as a school system, what I want to do is I want to help teachers teach. And the students that we see today in our public school system are much different than students that we would have seen 20, 30, 40 years ago. The things that they must deal with in our culture, in their home lives, the things that they bring to school with them cause us to have to address many of those things if we want to see them learn. And so, absolutely, I think the school system has an impetus to be involved in social and emotional learning.
Debbie, anything you want to add in terms?
No, no, I totally agree with him.
Well, we have a parent who's waiting with a question. She is a concerned parent from District Seven. Her name is Kathy Scott. Kathy, we'll ask you to come forward, and Joe will answer your question first.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
My name is Kathy Scott, and I am a concerned parent of a rising senior at East Hamilton High School here in District Seven. And my question is related to COVID-19, as we've already discussed, and the safety of our children. The district has given parents several options, or, and an option is called the HCS at home, where parents can keep their children at home to learn if they aren't comfortable with them returning to school in August. You must know, but about 18% of children in Hamilton County live below the federal poverty level, and often, parents, both parents, have to work to support their family. Many hold in jobs that cannot be done away from home, and these parents will have no option but to send their children to school. So, I have a two-part question for you. One, do you agree with the district's four-phase reopening plan for fall 2020? Two, would you make any modifications to ensure parents that their children will be safe upon return to school?
Sure. Well, the four-phased approach, what I've learned is, as we've looked at districts across our state and across the country, is obviously, everyone is grappling with this issue. And so, one of the things that I am proud of, when you talk about the reopening task force, is the amount of work that they've put into this. And if you've had an opportunity to look at the documents, pretty robust. And we have systems in our state right now that are not providing any options, and they're requiring students to come back. We actually have one that's very close in size to ours that's going to require students to come back with no mask. And so, what I'm proud of, again, is the work that has provided options. So, one, parents do have options. And then, two, as we look at those phases, we have to defer to expertise. So, you're, as an educational system, folks who are trained in the pedagogy and curriculum and instruction in advancing those things, have to lean on others and expertise. And so, again, that reopening task force has pediatric infectious disease experts, medical experts, county health experts. And so, we are somewhat dependent on them to help us through navigating students being in school, being at home, and what all that looks like.
All right, Debbie Myers?
Yeah, I actually totally agree with that. I think the data is continually changing. I am very impressed with the task force and the information that they put out on the four phases. I think that HCD has established guidelines that we'll need to follow in the reopening of our schools for our children and also our teachers. We have to also be concerned about our teachers and our support staff. I feel also that each parent is really going to have to make these tough decisions for their children and their family members. It's not going to be easy for any of us, but safety, obviously, has got to be the number one criteria, and that may change based on the data that we get from the medical professionals.
All right, Joe, do you have any rebuttal for that?
No.
Sounds like you're basically in agreement on this one. Kathy, thank you very much for your question. We appreciate you being a part of this debate. And our next question is also tied to COVID-19, and I want to interject here that an email has just gone out to Hamilton County parents from the school district, basically saying that they're getting closer to a Phase 2 reopening, which would involve reduced days on campus. You know, this thing is changing by the day, by the minute, but our question here is related to that. Let's assume for a minute that kids will be going back to school. And Debbie, you'll get this question first. Should students have to wear masks? Yes or no? Why or why not?
Well, I absolutely do believe that they should. I believe what the task force has put many hours, and they have been very diligent in providing us the necessary information to make these decisions. Obviously, you know, again, the parents are going to have to look at this. Is this some children, some teachers are going to have an issue with physically having to wear a mask just for physical reasons or possibly emotional reasons? So, there's so many, there's so many things that we have to look at. How are we going to make this work? The bottom line is, we need to get our children back into the classroom. They need the academic learning, and they need the socialization. That is part of being in school. I know my grandchildren, they said, I mean, they love going to school, and they are prepared to wear a mask.
All right, Joe?
Well, obviously, there are opinions all over the board on this, and one of the things that's been really interesting to me about these times, or, it seems that you can find the data to support your opinion almost anywhere right now. And it's one of the things that I've struggled with personally. My wife and I, as we've had conversation about this, is probably one of the first times in my life that I've really felt like it's hard to get solid information many times. I mean, even when you look at the medical field, it seems that data can be skewed one way or the other. But again, what we have to do, and it is, we have to defer to, whether we like it or not, we've got to defer to our governor, we've got to defer to the Tennessee Department of Education, we've got to defer to our county health department and to medical expertise in our county locally, who have their finger on the pulse of what's going on in our county as far as our community health is concerned. And, you know, there are going to be folks that agree with masks, don't agree with masks. At the end of the day, again, I'm thankful for the work of the task force that has provided options so that our constituents, our families, our students do have options if they're not comfortable with any recommendation or requirement when it comes to going back to school.
Debbie, do you have any response?
One of the things that I was talking to a teacher friend about is, what will it look like if we have a student or a teacher that tests positive for COVID in the classroom? Will the entire classroom then have to be in quarantine for two weeks? Most teachers don't have two weeks vacation, so what will that look like? I think that there is just more questions than answers right now, so we really do need to just side on the air of the knowledge that we have from the professionals in the medical field, that we just want our kids and our teachers to be safe. And so, if that requires a mask, then we need to wear the mask.
Thank you, candidates. And for those of you that may just be tuning into our Facebook Live debate, this full debate of the District Seven candidates for the Hamilton County School District will be shown in its entirety. And on Facebook, you can find it at WRCBTV or thetimesfreepress.com after this debate. Joe, this question is for you first, in regards to the assessment of the school superintendent. You had to give him a letter grade today. How would you rate Superintendent Dr. Brian Johnson's performance over the last three years? How would you plan to maintain a cohesive and professional relationship with the district leadership if you're elected again? What grade would you give Dr. Johnson?
Sure. So, when I first came on the board, I was probably the loudest proponent for change. As someone who is a product of public schools in Hamilton County, also worked in the system, again, I was pretty discouraged with where we were performance-wise and what I was seeing, just underperformance. It felt like apathetic school system that needed a paradigm shift. And so, one of the things that I was excited about was reorganization that Dr. Johnson brought about in our school system from not just a central office level, but also as we began to look at how we approached academics and how we were going to improve academic achievement and growth. So, I'd give him an A, absolutely would give him an A. And I've said this before, but also, when I got on the board, the instrument that we were evaluating him with was very vanilla, something that was used across the state. And I was charged by the board to create an instrument to hold him to higher levels of accountability. It's a very unique instrument, many student achievement metrics in that instrument that he must meet, and so far, he's met all of those.
Debbie Myers, what kind of grade would you give Dr. Johnson as a superintendent?
Well, I would probably give him, I would say, a B+. I'll do a B+. I think my personal feelings is Superintendent Johnson has done a great job moving the academic progress in a positive direction, and I look forward to the trend continuing. However, without being specific here tonight, I do question some of his personnel and policy decisions, which, as a school board member, I will bring before the board for full discussion. I do commend him in that he has proven that HCD has adequate funding by meeting his goal of fastest-improving district in Tennessee. So, I commend him for that.
Joe, anything you want to add on this? All right, thank you, candidates. Our next question tonight comes from Ellie James, who's a student at East Hamilton Middle High School. Ellie, we appreciate your participation and interest. What's your question, Ellie?
Thank you, Dave, and thank you guys for this opportunity to ask a question. My question is that this fall, Hamilton County school students are being given a variety of options to do virtual learning at home. And when schools first closed and started distance learning in March, many students, including some of my friends and my peers, were not able to do schoolwork at home because of lack of resources. And almost one-third of Hamilton County school students don't have access to the Internet, which allows some to move forward in learning while others fall behind. What should be done to address this issue, especially if the coronavirus pandemic forces additional school closure this fall and winter?
Debbie Myers, it's you first.
That's really a great, great question, Ellie. I feel that it is the right of each and every student to be offered and get an excellent education. That's how their dreams are going to be fulfilled. Now, what will that look like realistically? Each and every family, each and every child, they need to have access to Internet. How can we do that as a school board? These are all questions that need to be addressed, and I think each and every child, as I said earlier, we need to be able to provide them with the necessary tech equipment that they need in order to excel. There are, it was very sad to see, because that time that these students have lost, they don't get that back. It's now gone. So, we need to do a better job. COVID, I don't believe, is going away. So, we've got to be able to take care of our students and allow them to thrive and to become productive citizens.
Joe, your response?
Sure. So, one of the things, again, that I'm proud of this current board has done in the last couple of years is really push to make sure that all students in secondary ed have a device. So, we call it a one-to-one. All students 6 through 12 now have a device. It became even more apparent last year, and we've talked about pushing for devices at the primary level, that we were going to need those now K through 12. And so, many of those primary ed students were able to check out the device that they used in their classrooms at their schools. And so, students had devices if they needed those, but the biggest issue during the spring was just access to Internet service. And again, particularly in outlying areas of the county, in the Baco areas, Mowbray Mountain, Apison, Birchwood, those places, we've got to do a better job of being able to provide access to the Internet. And so, there's been a lot of discussion with our Internet service providers to try to partner with them, and I know that they're working hard to try to do that right now to make sure that our county is covered and that there aren't any gaps when it comes to access to the Internet.
Thank you, Joe. Anything you want to add, Debbie?
No.
And thank you very much, Ellie, for your great question, and hope you have a good school year. Joe, this first, this next question is for you. Nearly half of all students in Hamilton County schools are of color. One in three are economically disadvantaged. Educational equity is defined as intentional supports and policies designed to meet the individual needs of each learner to eliminate disparities so that these students can excel in learning alongside their peers. Should equity in education be a priority for Hamilton County schools? And if so, what should be done to address the disparities that these students are facing?
Sure. Again, I go back to the work of this board, really proud of the strategic plan that was created by this board three years ago. When I got on the board, there was no plan. Actually, there was a strategic plan, but it was almost 20 years old, and it was not being followed. And part of that plan, again, was to make sure that needs were being met. And, you know, many times, people confuse equity with equality, and equity simply means meeting needs. And so, part of that plan, in Office of Equity, we have an individual who's charged with looking at gaps in access, in service, whatever it may be, to make sure that in every district, and all of those needs are different. Equity means something different in all parts of the county, that if gaps exist in any district in our county, that we're working to address those. And when we work in accordance with our strategic plan, so far, it's shown that that's paying off and showing dividends.
All right, Debbie, what's the fix?
Well, I think that we've made, we've made some progress, but we still, obviously, have issues. Our inner-city schools, the children there, quite often, they are not reading at their grade level. In third grade, for instance, we have a very high percentage that are not reading at grade level, and rarely do they have the opportunity to catch up. We need to allow each and every student and provide the tools that they need to be a success. Every child, as I said, should have the opportunity to have an excellent education. Children at their earliest ages should learn and realize the importance of education in their lives. We need to teach this to our students. We need to show them that education is the ticket to fulfilling their dreams and having a successful, productive life.
All right, Joe, any response?
Our next question focuses on parental involvement, which many teachers and education experts often indicate is key to student success. As a school board member, how would you seek to authentically engage parents in the educational process? How can we involve parents more at individual schools? This goes first to Debbie Myers.
You know, parental engagement has You know, parental engagement has always been a concern. It's obviously a key to student success, but I truly am at a loss to know how to engage parents in their child's education when they either place no value on education, they cannot speak English, they work two jobs to provide a roof over their heads and food on the table, or a combination of all of these. I personally know of single mothers living in poverty level that have done an amazing job with their children. But I'll tell you guys, it is difficult. They, there are times that the that the parents choose not to be involved or they just absolutely cannot because of their time constraints. So this has been a problem, an ongoing problem for many years for the teachers in the classroom.
Joe, how do we involve parents more in schools?
Well, I think you got to provide value. They need to perceive value. When you look at our schools across the county, the magnet schools typically have the highest levels of parental involvement. And many times, the those, the reason for that is those folks value what's going on in that building more than they value what's going on in their zone school. And so we got to provide value. One of the things, especially at the secondary ed level, that again, that I'm excited about and proud of is that all of the branded partnerships that we now have through our future ready institutes. Not only is it providing value to students and families, but business and industry now sees value in what the school system is doing. And much of that again is because the school system went to business and industry and said, hey, what do you need, what can we provide for you? And so being able to provide value is going to draw people, doesn't matter what you're talking about, what you're selling. We're selling education and we need to show that we've got something of value in our buildings.
Thank you, Joe. Debbie Myers, anything you want to add?
No, I mean, I obviously, I guess I do want to just make one statement. Magnet schools are amazing. I would love to see that same level of commitment in our public schools. And that's in, that's where we really need to work in our district.
For those of you who are just logging on and watching, we are involved in a debate. District Seven Hamilton County School Board incumbent Joe Wingate, challenger Debbie Myers. We're nearing the halfway point, and so far, no major arguments or disagreements. But just like Jeopardy, the questions may get harder as we go along. So good luck as we move along to the second round. Joe, this one's will be for you first, and it is a bit of a hot topic in the community. The effort to raise taxes failed last year. Superintendent Johnson visited every district in the county campaigning, you might say, for additional tax funds, but the county commission did not go along. Do you think schools require additional funding as we move forward? If yes, what would you do to get that added money? And if not, why not?
Well, again, the Department of Education a year ago made a request for more funding. And I've said this many times, much like other departments in the county who request additional funding every year. And it's then up to the mayor and his staff to determine what they desire to fund in county government. And then it's also up to them to determine the mechanism by which they want to fund those things. They then take their desired funding and the mechanism that they propose to fund those with to the county commission. The school system is advocating again for resources to take what's been done, which has been historic, by the way, improve on that. And so I would always advocate for teachers and students and families to be able to have what they need. If we're going to talk about meeting needs, then we need to make sure that we have the adequate resources to meet those needs.
Debbie?
Well, I I was actually against the $34 million tax increase as most of the folks in my circle were. We have to remember that per student, the spending in our district or in HCD as a whole is the third highest in the state. And our per student spending calculation does not include the debt service of over 34 million a year the county pays on the bonds issued for school construction projects. I don't believe personally that it requires more money. What I believe is that the money is there and we need to take a good, hard look, as you would in any corporate business, where we can cut the corners, make sure it's not in the classroom. We need to provide the teachers and their students what they need in their classrooms. Let's look at central office. There's areas that we can whittle back and money is there. So I I don't believe a tax increase is the answer.
All right, we have a definite difference of opinion here. Joe, what's your rebuttal?
Well, my rebuttal would be the reason that the Hamilton County is third highest in the state in spending is because of the BEP formula. Hamilton County has to make up for the shortfall of a state mandate that's not fully funded. There are counties around us that most of their funding comes from the state. Hamilton County is not in that category. So again, when we talk about spending, the county spending is going to be higher because funding from the state is not as high as it is in other counties.
The Easter weekend tornadoes had a devastating effect on District Seven that you're both running in. What do you think of the critical impacts of this natural disaster for students? And how should the school system seek to address them? Debbie?
Well, obviously, it's been a horrific impact in our in our district. I think obviously with that and COVID, we're having to deal with both of these very difficult situations. And I know a number of families that completely lost their homes. So this does have an emotional impact on the children and their entire families, and that obviously can impact their learning. So I think that as a school system, we know that the needs are there. We need to provide the learning that they need. And I believe that the task force has done that by offering the four different phases and options. So there's, I mean, I think we just need to journey with folks. They've lost so much, and we just come together as a community because we we will prevail. We are Nuga Strong.
Joe Wingate, your response?
Yes, Dave, will you repeat the full question again, please?
Well, just the impact of the tornadoes and how should the school system seek to address some of the critical problems we saw from this natural disaster?
Sure. Yeah, so obviously, students relocated, homes destroyed, families relocated. And then also the destruction of East Brainerd Elementary School. East Brainerd Elementary is the largest elementary school in Hamilton County with 1,200 students. Last year, they had 10 kindergarten classes, some massive, massive school that right now is not serviceable. And so the biggest needs again were making sure that families and students have what they need to have access to education on a micro level individually and inside of family structures. And then also from a corporate level, where are they going to go to school? And so that was a a big, big deal in the spring, trying to figure out where to put the largest elementary school in Hamilton County. And so thankfully, I've come to some conclusions here, being able to put them at the new East Hamilton Middle. Our district's fortunate that a new middle school is coming online. It's large enough to hold that many students and teachers. Will be some adjustments there. That school wasn't necessarily built for little bodies and kindergartners and first and second graders. But hopefully by Christmas, we'll have East Brainerd School back online and then folks can go back to their home schools.
Debbie, any response? Is the school system dealing adequately with the problem?
You know, I I think we also need to really just keep our teachers and the staff at East Brainerd in our thoughts because there were, I mean, so many of them lost everything. And we have to remember that these teachers, I mean, they they purchased so many of their own items in their classrooms over years of their career. So it has been a tremendous loss for them as well. And you know, we just have to, we just have to be there for them and help them to move forward.
All right, speaking of teachers, we have one on the line here, Amy Willard. Come on in and ask your question, and this will go first to Debbie.
First of all, I would like to thank Mr. Wingate for all the support that he's shown our, my school during his tenure. My name is Amy Willard, and I am an ESL teacher at Best T Shepherd Elementary School. I'm also an adjunct literacy professor at UTC. I'm a firm believer that we have to meet students where they are, both academically and socially, to make gains. My question is about supports for our English language learners. Only 46% of English language learners in Hamilton County as a whole measured as proficient in English for their grade level. Specifically, District Seven has a high population of students who need those literacy supports. I teach kindergarten, first grade, and second grade. As you know, COVID has had a disproportionate impact on these families. And in general, it has been very hard for our youngest students to not only access, but actually learn using virtual platforms. If elected, what steps would you encourage the school board to take to address the issue of improving elementary student literacy, especially for populations who are also learning English as their second language?
Thank you for that question, Amy. I, you know, that's one of the issues that we face, I believe most school districts do. We may have children that can read, but they really don't understand what they're reading. So the literacy is a is a definite issue. I realize that with the ESL and then now with COVID and the learning, the online learning, it's going to be very, very difficult. So the, these are all, these are all issues that we have got to face. Now, obviously, you all can certainly tell that I have not been on the school board for four years. I don't have the knowledge, as my opponent obviously does, but I do have a heart to serve. And I want to do what I can do to help these littles, these young learners deserve to have the opportunity to learn English as a second language and to participate in this, in the classroom. And I know that that's an issue. I've I've talked with different teachers that so many of their littles, they they can't understand what they're, what's being taught in the room. That's just definitely heartbreaking.
All right, Joe?
Yeah, I think, thank you for the question, Amy. And and I think one of the things that we've looked at in secondary ed and it needs to trickle down to the primary grades is is transition curriculum. How do we help them transition into an environment where their native language is not spoken all day long? And one of the things that's really a struggle with this, and and Amy would know this, teaching these students, is that it's really frustrating that the state requires that once these students are in country for a calendar year, they're now taking our state assessments, and they're not ready for those assessments. Just imagine being dropped into a Spanish speaking culture, and 12 months after you've been there now, you're being evaluated and assessed educationally, and it is a struggle. We've got to find a way, as we've done with our secondary ed students, to have some sort of transition classroom or curriculum to allow them to transition much more easily into the, into our culture.
Debbie, do you have a rebuttal?
No, I totally agree.
Amy Willard, we want to thank you for joining us in this debate with your question. Give our love to everybody at Best T and hope you all are together again soon.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, let's talk more about the budget, Joe and Debbie. The district's budget that you would help determine if you are on the school board includes a lot of very important line items, teacher salaries, maintenance, transportation, nutrition, safety, security. You know, there's a lot on the list here, and you got to have priorities. So with the current financial situation as it is, what are your top three priorities to be reflected in the upcoming budget? And if something has to be cut, what do you cut? And Joe, you get this one first.
Well, I think we have to start with our students and teachers, making sure they've got the technology that they need to be able to do what's going to be asked of them in this ever changing environment. So proud of what they did in the spring, having to pivot on a dime. You know, we were, we were in school on Friday, the 13th in March, and that was the last day. And students and teachers and families didn't really know they weren't going to be coming back on Monday. None of us did. And and watching them pivot to online learning. I think also, we're going to have to really, this is kind of the the bear that that no one really talks about is is transportation. Transportation is the most efficient thing that we do in Hamilton County schools right now. And much of that is because what's been handed to us over the last 20, 25 years is combination of contract drivers and then also a contract service. And it's extremely inefficient, and it's also put us in a bind to be able to have to figure out if we're going to have our own bus service, if we're going to continue to contract out. There are only so many that are large enough to be able to handle a school system of our size. And then lastly, facilities, we've got to get a handle on the facility decline that's been taking place since the the two school systems merged 23 years ago.
And if you got to cut something, what is it?
I don't know. I don't know. Right now, I would say cuts are going to take place through efficient operations. And that's one of the things again that I'm proud of is all of the gains that have taken place in the last three years that have happened with balanced budgets. So there've been efficiencies that have taken place within the system in many different areas. And that's lent itself to us being able to pivot and be much more nimble and also perform at a higher level.
All right, Debbie, top three budget items and number one cut.
I too agree that our number one priority should always be our classroom. That would be our teachers and our students. Obviously, the needs are changing due to COVID and the different restrictions that we now are under. We also need to make sure that our teachers have what they need. Let's make sure that they have their supplies and the things that that they don't have to buy out of pocket. So I I think that's my number one, and I I want to to actually be there and represent the teachers. It's so vitally important. Facilities and infrastructure, I think, is very important. We all know that we have facility needs, that we have 25 years of deferred maintenance list that boggles the mind. And we all must understand, we must eat at this huge problem one bite at a time. We didn't get here overnight. This is is certainly nothing that Superintendent Johnson has done. This is something he inherited. We need to plan for the next 10 years as to how we are to approach the issue in a measured and fiscally responsible manner. The citizens of Hamilton County have spent the equivalent of over $1 billion in new facilities in the last 20 years. I I would imagine that the next 20 years, we're also going to have to spend some money. So we need to look at that. How are we going to do that? I think that if there were cuts, again, I have already stated, I think in any corporation, you can look at the overhead, you can look at the the top down structure and and just really evaluate. Are there areas that can be cut?
All right, gave you both a little extra time there because it's hard to cram a lot of budget priorities and and a cut in a minute. Joe, do you have a rebuttal?
The only thing I would say is in regards to cutting at the top or or what I've heard before is trimming the fat. One stat that folks need to understand is that as far as in the state with students of 30,000 students or more, which obviously we fall into that category, we're next to the last when you talk about our ratio of central office administrators to the, per number of students that we have.
Both of you spoke about the importance of of the staff. So let's, wanted to ask about both the way recruit, retain, and develop our staff. Great leaders set the stage for great teachers by creating an environment that supports great expectations, innovation, and excellence. And as we all know, great teachers can really transform the lives of their students. High quality teachers, not only the most important factor to students' academic success, but also can help students envision and really explore a lifetime of success. So what strategies would you propose the school system implement or continue to attract and retrain great teachers and leaders? Debbie Myers, this goes to you first. How do we recruit and retain teachers and leaders?
Well, obviously, as an HR director for many years, I personally believe that quality staff recruitment starts with the retention of quality staff, which is accomplished by providing an outstanding working environment. As a former HR director, as I said, and a mediator, I know from experience, you recruit and retain great staff by first establishing a great workplace. I know there is room for improvement in this area, and I know my career experience can be of value in discussing specifics with the superintendent's staff.
Joe Wingate, your response?
Yeah, again, proud of the work this board has done. There was no plan for recruitment or retaining of teachers. When I first got on the board, our our HR department was not even conducting exit interviews with employees to find out, you know, where their level- with, um, employees to find out, you know, where their level of dissatisfaction was, what they were dissatisfied with while they were leaving, um, our organization and, and going to, to others. Um, we, we hired, uh, Mr. Keith Fogelman, uh, a guy that's done a tremendous job. Uh, 30-plus years as an HR executive, not been in the world of education. Come in and transformed the way that, uh, our, our school system has gone about recruiting and trying to retain, uh, employees. And our turnover rates, um, have really, really improved drastically, uh, since, since he's come. And one of those things was just to begin to recruit teachers specifically much earlier in the year. We were recruiting so late in the spring that many of our competitors, uh, those systems closed us, uh, were, were gobbling up, uh, the limited number of teacher candidates, uh, that were available. And so it's kind of changed the timeline on that and when we're going about, uh, recruiting teachers and being able to get more high-quality candidates and then providing them with what they need, uh, to be able to feel satisfied in their job and, and, and come back.
Thank you, Joe. Debbie, anything you want to add?
Um, actually, I would. I should have probably added, I actually had an online, um, questionnaire for teachers. And, um, one of the questions I had asked them is, what is your experience working in HCDE, in our school system? And the number one issue was they were unhappy with their work environment. So I, I do believe, um, that questionnaire is still out there and I, I, that, that percentage was over 80%, all of the teachers that did respond to the questionnaire. It wasn't about pay, it was about their work environment. And that could be leadership. That could be, um, leadership within the individual schools.
You know, one thing that Dave Lester and I have in common is we've been covering local news for a long, long time. And, uh, my coverage of schools goes back pre-merger. I've noticed some of these questions could have been asked then too, and were asked then at the, at, at that time. Here's one of those. Uh, majority of black and Latino students in Hamilton County attend high-poverty schools. Yes or no? Do you think it's important to increase racial and economic integration in our schools? If yes, how do you do that? And if no, why no? Joe?
Yeah, absolutely. I think diversity is important. Um, again, I go back to provide value. A, a, and I am a proponent of, uh, traditionally zoned schools. But when you look at our magnet schools, um, they typically are pretty ethnically diverse. And again, what you see is there's something there that families perceive, um, of value that they want to, um, be a part of. And so, uh, the, the chore is, is to create, um, that level of engagement and excitement, uh, in all 78 schools. And I think when you do that, then you begin to see, uh, uh, some changes in diversities of schools. Um, we also have, um, some zoning issues that we need to take care of. And I'm not a fan or, or a believer that zoning fixes diversity, uh, at all because people can.
I don't know if that's my connection or, uh, if Joe's signal is frozen. Are you all hearing him? Okay, uh, hopefully we'll get Joe's signal back in just a moment. Uh, Debbie, would you like to, Joe, are you back with us? Can you hear us okay?
Yes, sorry, was that?
Uh, if you can, if you, I'm sorry to ask you to do this, but I think you were frozen there the last 15 or 20 seconds. So if, if you were wrapping up something there, I should give you the opportunity to say it again.
What, what was the last thing you heard? Sorry.
Uh, we were talking about integration and, and how to, uh, you, you remember the question. Of course, I'm not sure exactly what the last word you said was, but I, I guess is it, go ahead.
No, that's fine. I, I, I won't, I won't repeat myself. I don't know where I, I don't know where you guys lost it, but it's good.
All right, Debbie.
Well, obviously, I, diversity is very important. Um, I don't believe that where you live or where you go to school should mandate the level of education that you receive. I, it, this is really tough for me. I, I do have, I am somewhat against any plans of forced busing to achieve that goal. I have the folks that I've talked with, um, that socioeconomic diversity in our schools. And I think most parents, they're, they're against the community or they feel the same that the forced busing is not the answer. So I think this has to be an ongoing conversation that we have because these kids deserve it.
And Joe, would you like to respond?
Sure. Yeah, I, I, I'm not for any type of forced busing or even forced diversity. Um, I think again, what you do is you try to create community schools that have value. And most folks that I know want to go to school in their community. They want to go to school with the folks that they live with and that they interact with on that basis.
Well, in Hamilton County, as you know, the, uh, school board operates, oversees the schools, but the money comes through the Hamilton County Commission. So I wanted to ask you about how you relate to the county commission. Since the county commission decides most of the funding levels for Hamilton County schools, county commissioners represent the same districts as the school board. How would you work with the county commission on school budgets, programs, strategies? Debbie Myers, you?
I, I think it'd be very important to have, um, the collaboration with the commissions, the commissioners. I think as a mediator, I believe that one of my skill sets is that I could bridge a gap there. I, I know that there have been tensions in the past and I think that these are two, uh, two groups of folks that need to work well with one another. We need them. So I, I would, I would really love to utilize, uh, the skills that I have, uh, being that, that neutral person at the table and really working with them and collaborating with them.
Joe Wingate, do the school board and the county commission work adequately together? And how do you foster a better relationship?
Sure. What, one of the things I'm thankful for, uh, is my county commissioner. Uh, and we have worked extremely well together over the last four years. And I've been able to lean on her for, for many things that I don't understand. And she's able to lean on me for, uh, parts of, um, education that maybe she doesn't understand. I think, I think the way that you, uh, build trust is you just, you show results. Um, you, you, you work in your lane and you work, um, towards your charge, what you've been asked to do, and you demonstrate competency in what you're doing. And I think when you do that, um, folks begin to see the consistency, uh, and there's a trust that's developed, um, as you work over time.
Debbie, anything, any rebuttal or additional comment?
No, that, that's absolutely correct.
All right, here's a question for you, and this one, I guess, kind of gets a little personal, but, uh, politics can be personal from time to time. There's a reason each of you are in this race. Uh, Joe Wingate, you're an incumbent. You obviously think you're doing quality work and you want to continue to do so. And Debbie, you're challenging Joe. You apparently think you can do a better job than Joe is doing. So Joe, uh, we'll, we'll let you go first on this. Are you an effective school board member? I will assume the answer is yes, and why are you an effective school board member?
Well, again, I'll, did I break up there? Sorry.
A little bit.
I'll go back, I'll go back to, um, the reasons I ran or decided to run four years ago. Um, I was not happy, uh, in the least with where we were. My oldest was, uh, in kindergarten, beginning his educational journey. I have twins that are two years behind him. My wife and I are both public school products. We both taught in public school. We now both teach in higher ed. We both now teach future teachers. And as I was bemoaning, um, all the ills of the school system, my wife challenged me to do something about it. And so, uh, I decided to stick my nose in and, uh, and do something about it. And I'm, I'm proud of what's taking place. I'm proud of the work, the time, the effort, the energy that's been put into this thing over the last four years. And there have been historic gains in academic growth and achievement. There have been efficiencies found, uh, to achieve those gains that haven't happened before. And so I'm extremely proud of the work and, uh, I want to see us take this thing to a whole other level.
Oh, Debbie, you want his job? And I'm, I'm going to assume you think you can be a more effective board member. Is he effective? Because frankly, I guess if you thought he was, you wouldn't be running.
Well, obviously, as I said before, I know that I have a learning curve and I'm okay with that. I think that I can bring to the board a fresh perspective. I don't have any biases built up over the years. Um, I, I really want and believe that I can be an asset. One of the reasons, one of the primary reasons that I chose to do this and why I was approached by a number of people to do this was because of my opponent's voting record. We did not feel that he was representing us at all. He, he approved the 34 million. He approved the 500,000 MGT facilities study. And then also Superintendent Johnson's, um, premature contract extension. That it was for $240,000 two years before. None of us wanted that. Most of us, as I said before, in District Seven are very conservative in our thought processes. And when Joe first ran, uh, he, he said that he, he would listen to the voice of, of the voices of the constituents that put him in that seat. And none of us felt that that was, that that has happened over the last four years. So do I think I can do a better job? I believe that I will do a better job for the taxpayers, the teachers and the students. Although I think Joe has done a, a great job in many areas, he hasn't listened to us and that's a problem.
Joe, is that true?
I don't think so. I think there's, there are many inaccuracies in some of that. Absolutely, um, that I approve a facility study. Um, hasn't been a facility study, uh, there done since pre-2000. Um, we have issues in facilities that need to be addressed that have been handed down to us over the years, in my opinion, by elected officials who chose to be more concerned with being reelected than they did with governing well. When you look at that facility study, it's a half a million dollars. It's, it's a big ticket item. But also, any, any budget item that covers the breadth of the county is going to be a large ticket item. We have 78 buildings. That study costs $6,000 per building. Those people were here for a year. They studied everything from infrastructure to security, to demographics, um, to populations. Uh, I, I think we got a bargain for that. And then also the contract extension, a lot of fallacies in that. That was not two years removed. That was, uh, four months from when we would have begun negotiating. Dr. Johnson's contract specifically stated that we would not begin talking about an extension until we were inside of 12 months. Um, we started that four months earlier. And the reason that we did, frankly, is because me being a newbie on the board and others didn't understand that there's a 90-day blackout period, um, before an election and 30 days after an election where you can't do anything with the superintendent's contract. And so we did that out of necessity, um, not because we were trying to do something two years earlier. Uh, we did it four months earlier than we would have.
All right, thank you, Joe. Both of you were talking about facilities and the needs of schools in tonight's debate just now, Joe. So do you support the final report, uh, on the Hamilton County School Facilities, which recommended a three-phase, 10-year plan for remitting the district's facilities? And with a price tag of something like 891 billion up to 1.3 billion? If you support that, how should the fund, how should that plan be funded? And if not, what should be done to address these critical needs of sort of aging buildings and the backlog of maintenance that we have? Debbie, how do we address all these needs?
Um, well, obviously, this has been an issue kicked down the road. That King has been kicked down the road for many, many years. Um, the, the 891 million dollars, that, that's just not going to happen. It's just not realistic. So we have to look at and go back to the table and determine, as I said, take one bite at a time. I, I don't believe we should have spent $500,000 for this study. Most of these facilities, we already knew the issues. That money could have been used, uh, in, in places that we actually had the need.
Joe, how do we fix our facilities? And you addressed this somewhat, but is that, was this study a waste of money in your mind?
No, I, again, I think you defer to expertise. Um, listen, we've got a county maintenance department. My, my, my issue with that is who, who was going to do those inspections? Who was going to do that facility evaluation? I'm just giving an example, uh, in Hamilton County schools, we have six painters, six painters to paint all 78 school buildings in Hamilton County. So to think that the folks who sit on the school board were going to do any type of evaluation is not deferring, um, to expertise. Uh, the, the plan itself is much like a home inspection, you know? Uh, again, it's a large number. There, there's no way that I believe that we're going to be able to address $800 million. But when you buy a home, the buyer and the seller, uh, both have an independent party go and do an inspection of the facility. And that independent party, if they're worth their salt, is going to bring back any and all deficiencies that they find in the building. And then it's up to the buyer and the seller to negotiate and determine what's a priority, what needs to be fixed and what doesn't need to be fixed. And so I appreciate the report. It is very thorough. Now it's up to the, the school board to decide, along with the community, what are priorities? And along with the county commission, what are they willing to fund? And how can we begin to address some of those things?
Debbie Myers, any rebuttal?
Uh, my, I'm just, I've had a debate with Joe in the past about this and, and I, I, I've asked, well, where are they then in that process? He said they were at ground zero. Well, that really doesn't offer the constituents of District Seven much hope that the facility study, which I totally understand what Joe is saying, but where is it going to go? It feels like it's just sitting there.
We may have time to squeeze in another question or two before your, uh, closing statements. You'll have a couple of minutes each to do that, but let me, uh, get one in here. A lot of things are said during a political campaign. Um, some things are said out loud, some things are whispered. But there has been some talk about, uh, groups, organizations, nonprofits, uh, advocacy groups that, uh, are interested in the school board race. So I'm going to start with Joe on this. What are your opinions of outside organizations? Hamilton United, Unify Ed, Good Government Coalition, Hamilton Flourishing, there may be others. Do any of those have an influence in your policy? Do any of them pull your strings?
Well, one of the things I've said, and I've had this conversation many times, is one of the frustrating parts of serving in this role is there are always advocacy groups. There have been for a long time. There've been advocacy groups that have, um, played a part in our, the professional development at times in Hamilton County schools, whether it be leadership academies or things of that nature. Uh, and one of the things that frustrates me, uh, constantly is the fact that most of the time, those groups are the ones that are out trying to shape the narrative around public education in Hamilton County. And they are the ones who know the least about what's going on. And so the other thing that frustrates me is that many times they come in under the guise of wanting to advocate for education. Um, but most of the time, they morph into a political action group. And, uh, a, as somebody who is an educator, who values, um, the education profession and wants our school system to be something that adds value to the community, um, that's not something I'm interested in being involved in.
Debbie?
Well, it was, I mean, it, it has been a concern that Hamilton County United, as well as Unified Ed and the Teachers Union have all endorsed my opponent. Um, I feel that some of these voices are very, very loud and they are trying to impact our school system with their, um, beliefs and ideologies. So it has been a concern. I think, uh, you know, there was quite an issue with, uh, uh, one of the groups a year or so back that they truly were trying to take over our, our school system. So, uh, this is a concern, I think, as taxpayers, constituents, teachers and students. We need to be extremely, extremely cautious, uh, who we align ourselves with.
So I can, I, I, I gather from your answers, both of you are telling me nobody pulls your strings.
Hmm, nobody.
Dave?
Majority of the budget clearly goes for staff cost. Uh, a 2.5% mid-year raise was granted in the last school year to teachers. But budget cuts scrapped the planned pay increases for the next year for many teachers. Do we need additional salary increases for, for teachers and why, why not?
Dave, do I get a rebuttal on that last question?
I, I, you know, I'm sorry. I should have allowed that. Yeah, Dave, if you don't mind, let's go ahead, Joe.
I'm sorry. Yeah, one of the things I'll say to that is, um, anytime you run for an elected office, there are many folks that want to ask you your opinions, um, what you think. And I've spoken to, to all who have called to ask me about where I stand with public education. I can't control who. I can't control who supports me, who endorses me. I've not asked for any endorsements. And one thing I'll say is, I've also not ducked any opportunity to get before folks in public and speak to what I think about public education in the state of where we are right now.
Thank you, Joe. Sorry I cut you off. I did want to ask each of you then about teacher pay. We didn't have a pay increase this year that was originally budgeted because of some of the coronavirus cutbacks that were necessitated, budget shortfall. What do you think of the levels of pay in Hamilton County? Do we need to pay teachers more? Debbie?
Well, I know the board approved, I believe it was 4.5% a year or two back. And rather than the teachers getting that increase, the administration decided to hire an additional 188 new employees. Only 55 of those employees were classroom-related. So that was, to me, I was very disappointed in that. I felt that our teachers deserved the pay increase. Now, with the 2.5%, it's going to be very difficult with the COVID and just because we know that we're going to have a shortfall in our budget. We just know that we are. So, yeah, I feel really bad for them that they didn't get it when it was approved by the board, and I appreciated the board doing that.
Joe Wingate, your response?
Will you repeat the question again, please?
Well, just, do teachers need to be paid more money, you think? Was the, should the school board make decisions to allocate more resources for teacher pay to retain and recruit teachers?
Well, there's a teacher shortage all across the country, and so what you have are school systems who are trying to compete in the marketplace. And I say this all the time, but, you know, the market drives the value. So if we want to be able to recruit, retain quality educators, we're going to have to be able. Now, again, compensation is not all that makes, keeps a teacher satisfied. I can speak as one of those. Quality of life goes a long way in that. But going back to the bonus last year, that came from the collaborative conferencing process. That was something the teachers asked for. That was not something done by administration. The teachers' representatives, both union and non-union, voted unanimously that they would rather have a bonus if they were able to get some of the supports that they were asking for. So teachers got what was given to them by the governor, and they got it in a manner of which they preferred to have it.
Debbie, any rebuttal?
I'm aware that the Teachers Union, that's what their thought process was, but they didn't speak for all of the teachers.
All right.
They would have preferred to have an increase in pay.
All right. Let's get one more question in before your closing statements. We talked a little bit about political advocacy groups. This question is about student advocacy. You know, this is an interesting time in which we're living now. Hamilton County students have been in the news recently engaging in protest regarding racial injustice. Are you proud of what these students have said and done? Would you give them a pat on the back, or do you feel like they are out of line? Joe, you're first.
Yeah, I'll be the first to admit that I stay pretty unplugged many times when it comes to social media, news, things of that nature. I will say that I do think that we need to support students when they feel like their voice is not being heard. Now, having said that, I think it's incumbent on us as educators and as adults to show them how to do that responsibly, to show them how to communicate their voice, how to advocate for what they want, but do it in a manner that not only will clearly communicate their desires, but also gain them the respect of those who they wish to hear their concerns.
Debbie?
Yeah, I totally agree with Joe. I totally support our First Amendment right, and I think that they should be able to freely engage in peaceful protest. What I would not agree with is it becoming violent or property being destroyed. I think that adults need to show and demonstrate to our children how to do that effectively, so that their voices can be heard.
Okay, Joe, any follow-up on that?
No, sir.
At least I remembered to ask this time. That's a plus in my favor. All right. Some people may just now be logging on. We're at the end of this, and they're wondering, who are these people? What are they talking about? District 7, Hamilton County School Board, Joe Wingate has served in that post for four years. Debbie Meyer wants to serve for the next four years. So each of you have two minutes to sell these folks who are watching on why you're better than the other person, why your vision is different and better. You have two minutes to do so, and Joe, you go first.
Sure. Again, I've talked at length about my reasons for running four years ago, what my desire was, what I desired to see, my vision for what I thought could happen in Hamilton County. Said many times that Chattanooga has much to be proud of, and people have been moving to this area for a long time for a lot of reasons. A lot of economic reasons, a lot of quality of life reasons. But one of the reasons for the previous decade or so that they weren't moving here was our school system, and I wanted to see that change. I want to just reiterate where we were and where we are now. After my first year on the board, Hamilton County seniors were offered $20 million in scholarship money. After last year, they were offered $121 million in scholarship money three years later. We now have seven high schools listed in the top 100 high schools in the country by U.S. News and World Report. We've had the highest graduation rate this last year since 2013. When I first got on the board, we only had five reward schools. And out of all 78 schools in Hamilton County, and a reward school is a designation given by the state of Tennessee that just says you rank in the top 25% academically across the state amongst your peers. After 2019, we had 32 reward schools out of our 78, a 400% increase. And all schools in District 7 are now reward schools. We also went from being ranked 130th of 147 school systems across the state in academic growth and achievement to being ranked number two in the state after the 2019 school year, and also earning the designation of fastest improving school district in the state of Tennessee. And then lastly, two of the last three state principals of the year have come from Hamilton County. We also have one up for that right now, and Dr. Brian Johnson has just recently been named the Southeast Tennessee State Superintendent of the Year, and he is up for State Superintendent of the Year.
All right. Debbie, your two-minute closing statement?
As I said earlier, I definitely am aware that I don't have four years of knowledge as my opponent does on the board, but I do have a heart to serve. I have listened well to the constituents that I've spoke with in my district, and I really believe one of the primary responsibilities of a school board representative is to supervise and manage the superintendent. I want to be a board member who respectfully challenges the superintendent's thinking in private and public, seeking the best possible solution for all stakeholders in our community. I also want to bring my business background to the school board and help them explore simple business principles and strategies to solve our facilities issue. It's time for the school board to stop the current process and use the data to develop a short-term, practical facilities plan the community can digest and support without a tax increase. And I said earlier that one of the things that is most troubling is the lack of trust that we currently have in our district. I think that it's very important to get someone new on the board that will listen to the taxpayers, the teachers, students, and their parents.
Thank you, Debbie Myers. Thank you, Joe Wingate. And now we'll turn it back to Molly Blankenship, the Executive Director of Chattanooga 2.0.
Thank you, Dave, and congratulations to our District 7 candidates for a job well done. Thank you both so much for participating, and again, for your commitment to serving in this incredibly important role for our community. I want to thank Dave and David for their moderation, and to our co-hosts, WRCB Channel 3 and the Chattanooga Times Free Press. Thank you. Huge thank you to Kathy, Ellie, and Amy for their excellent questions and perspectives as members of the district. And last but not least, thank you to you all for tuning in. If you missed the first part of tonight's debate for District 7 or last night's District 2 debate, the video recordings are available on WRCB's YouTube channel. And tomorrow night, we'll be right back here at 5:30 PM for the final debate, which is District 1 with incumbent Rhonda Thurman and candidate Stephen Vickers. Really hope that you all can tune in and make that. And please don't forget that early voting starts this Friday, July 17, and the deadline to request an absentee ballot is July 30. After this, make sure to head over to the Decision 2020 page on WRCB's website to find more information. The Chattanooga Times Free Press has great information as well. Appreciate you all tuning in and staying engaged and involved in this conversation. And in closing, we recognize just how important this year's elections are for our continued progress as a community overall. And so I thank you for your engagement, and I hope you have a good evening. We'll see you tomorrow for our final debate, and stay safe out there.
Thank you.
Thank you.